Something that we're pretty used to seeing by now. This is the annual award to our comptroller. It's the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting that Ron has won on behalf of the -- or for the City of Urbana. For my understanding is, this is the 16th year in a row. And so, Ron, if you'll come up here to accept this award. This is an award presented to the City of Urbana, Illinois for its comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2002. A certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting is presented by the Government Financial Officers Association of the United States and Canada to government units and public employee retirement systems whose comprehensive annual financial reports receive the highest standards in government accounting and financial reporting. Ron, that's really a tribute to you to have that, to hold that standard for 16 years. Well, we're very lucky to have Ron. I'm heading up our finance department. Why don't we just take it for granted that the numbers are going to be accurate and his forecasts are going to be accurate? He does just a tremendous job. So, Ron, thanks so much.
Any other staff report?
I'll pass at this time.
Okay. Then we'll go on to approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by second, or I'm sorry, motion by Ms. Pat, second by Mr. Hayes. Are there any corrections, additions, changes? Not all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Those pass. We'll next move on to public input. Anyone wishing to give public input, please fill out one of the yellow sheets at the back and turn it to the clerk and you'll have up to five minutes to speak. The first person on here, or the only sheet I've actually got, is several people, Barkley, Stotz, Darty, Kelman, Miller, and Maxim, wishing to speak on the neighborhood West Florida Avenue between Race and Broadway on the topic of streetlights, proposed halogen aluminum 30-foot poles, U.S. lantern-style lights in opposition to these halogen aluminum lights and in support of lantern-style lights. I believe Mr. Miller is going to speak?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Basically, we would like to-
If you wouldn't mind sitting and speaking in the microphone and that way your voice can be recorded.
Surely. We'd like to thank the city for improving the infrastructure of the city. However, the homeowners in this area of Florida were totally unaware of this project up until three weeks ago. And we had hoped that the style of lantern that is immediately to the west of us would be continued, but the larger aluminum poles are the ones that have been selected for our area and we are essentially petitioning the city council to reconsider that. We recognize that they would enhance this section of our neighborhood and I realize that equally it's an additional expense. I understand that it's more to install and more to operate, but we hope that you will reconsider our area as a neighborhood that would be improved by this style of lighting. And if any of the other neighbors that are here would like to speak, I'll now let them.
Would anyone else from the neighborhood like to speak? And if you could state your name and address so that we can have that, appreciate it.
Sure. I'm James Barkley and I live at 113 West Florida, one house off of Race in Florida. I think it is a, Florida is known as sort of a major corridor in Urbana and I think that's even more reason to have a nicer, more appealing light system there because it would be more exposure to people coming through our community.
Thank you. Anyone else from the neighborhood would like to speak?
Greg Maxson, 116 West Florida. I'm two houses from the Race and Florida intersection. I too like to see the same lights continue that are on the west side of the intersection. I think it would add a nice, continue the flow of lights there on that side of the street. The ones that are being proposed, that are going to be installed are, I think, more conducive to a large shopping mall rather than a residential area. And I think it would definitely impact the standard of living, or negatively impact our standard of living in that area. Thanks.
Are there any questions for any of the speakers? Ms. Chenoweth, or Mr. Miller?
Just for clarification, I received the letter by the Kelmans and Millers, but I don't understand how many blocks down the lights are proposed for. Is it just the 100 block?
It's from essentially Race to Broadway was. And on the north side, it's essentially a single block and on the south side, it's about two, two and a half blocks because of the two small cul-de-sacs. I think the mayor is familiar with that neighborhood.
Yeah. I'm very familiar with it.
Yeah. Are there any other questions?
Oh, did you still have some more?
Yeah, just so that, just so I understand, it's from Broadway to Race, one block on the south side, on the north side and the entire property line on the south side?
Yeah, I understand from the Public Works Director that it's necessary to light both sides in that configuration as opposed to currently they're abandoning the southern side of the system and are just going to install the northern side.
Okay. And then the, but the installation has not happened yet?
No, it hasn't.
And what, what's your, where does your information come from? Have you seen the lights or have you briefed?
From the letter that was sent out by the city, none of us were aware of this project. I understand that it was a project that has been in the works since '95 and I recognize that when you're working with a project over a 10-year period and everyone's fully aware, but all but one resident in that area has moved in since '96, which is when we moved there. So, nearly 100% turnover since that time, so we were totally unaware of the project.
That's all. Thank you. Ms. Pat?
Am I correct in understanding that what, that the existing light fixtures are the 30-foot poles?
They're the fluted iron ones, yes.
Okay. So, and if you just lived there for a short period of time, I guess I would know better that you never had, the type of light fixtures that are on the streets west of Race Street, north of Florida, were never, you never had those fixtures on Florida east of Race?
I understand. Frankly, I remember a couple of years ago when they were replaced and I think there was some enhancement as far as balancing out the system, but to be honest, I didn't take that kind of notice. It, I just had not, and I don't think we had not, it hadn't occurred to us that we might get something different.
So, what's being proposed for Florida from Race to Vine is the same pole, but your concern is it's a higher illumination?
It's partly that and partly aesthetics. Partly, we think that it would enhance the neighborhood, very similar to the way it has enhanced the street from, say, Race to Vine on Washington. It's, that's the same style of lighting. I think that in general, we were hoping for the lower style lighting.
So, I guess I'm wondering if it was the same pole, but it weren't as light?
Well-
That, I mean, I realize you prefer the other ones, they're more expensive, but everything east of Race is the 30-foot pole, not the old historic ones. And so, I'm wondering if that's, if your main concern is what the pole, that you want nicer-looking poles than you've always had, or if you don't want more light than you have now?
Um, I think-
Which is important.
One thing that is a concern is increased illumination. Okay? Second off is the fact that the aesthetics of preferring the lower style as opposed to the aluminum ones.
And do you know, I don't know that I would know what it means, but do you know how much brighter the proposed lights will be than what you have now?
No, I don't.
Okay. Well, we can find that out. Thank you.
Surely.
Are there any other questions? Okay. And you also provided Ms. Clark with a petition, is that right?
Yes.
Or someone in your group?
Yes.
Okay. And I think Ms. Clark is going to share that information with council. And we also received your letter, I think, on October 7.
Right.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry? Oh, yeah, certainly. If you could just state your name and address for the record, that'd be great.
Yeah, my name's Joan Stoles and I live at 108 West Florida. I have a concern about the aesthetics and the illumination, but I can say that the, what we have right now, the poles right now, they end up looking exactly the same. I probably wouldn't object to that. But these lights look very modern, they're very bright, the lamp post is very bright and it kind of looks a little bit like War of the World. So, go over to the school and I believe that's the type of lighting that you got proposed for us that really will not look like a residential neighborhood after that's done. So, I'm actually very happy with what we have right now. They're rusting, but I'm happy with what we have right now. So, I think it's Michigan Avenue, isn't it, where, that we would-
Over by the school?
Over by the school. So, if you could take a look at those lights, I'd greatly appreciate it. I don't think anyone would want those around.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. And so, they're, they're very modern, very ugly and I just moved in in December and I just couldn't believe that things were going to change that fast. But anyway, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks. Anyone else from the neighborhood like, would like to speak? Okay. That's all the sheets I've got for public input. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak? Mr. Gray, would you like to speak on that?
Just a couple of comments. I have talked to or corresponded with a few of the residents this evening and this was a plan that we did review with the city council in '95 and essentially it was a low pole replacement ornamental poles with similar style poles and the tall poles were replaced with tall poles in the city. And we're nearing the end of our series replacements and Florida is on the, is a contract right now for those replacements. We're currently doing the work east of Vine Street in Florida. We'll be finishing up on Vine from the middle school down to Florida also. As was the discussion for upgrades back in '95, if a block wanted to go from the tall poles to something more ornamental looking, such as the low poles west of Race, that's possible, that's feasible, but policy has always been that net cost increase would be borne by the property owners adjacent to the site. I talked to Mr. Miller about that and I would say it was about a $25,000 or so thousand dollar cost between Broadway and Race. And there was some interest on the block, is the feedback I received, but not full interest on, in that area to want to pay that upcharge and the cost of the lights. So, clearly, one of the decisions we made in '95 was, and this was a multimillion-dollar replacement project and we have a lot of tall, series light poles that had to be replaced and when we went through all the numbers and all the funding sources, how this would be paid for, et cetera, you know, a informed decision at that time was made that we could afford to replace all this, but it had to be more or less in kind. And that's been the process we've gone with since '95. But we're open to upgrading particular blocks where it makes sense and we don't want to do a house here, a house there, but, you know, two blocks like this area would be fine to do. I've had a couple of other inquiries through the last year or so also and when we talked about the cost per household and, yeah, it might be $1,200, $1,500 per house, it depends on the situation, generally, it hasn't gone any further.
Ms. Chenoweth?
I'm trying to understand why shorter, less bright lights would be more expensive than taller, brighter lamps?
It's basically because you have to double the number of poles. The shorter poles, you have to have closer spacing for illumination and uniformity reasons. Taller poles can be spaced at much larger distances, so you literally need half as many poles. That's essentially the reason.
And did we, when the project was undertaken in '95 after council approval, basically stockpiled several different kinds of poles? And now we're in a situation where we've already purchased these tall poles with the lights, ready to install, and we don't have any more short poles left around to install? Or, I mean, has the investment been made already? Would we actually have to make an additional investment to put double the number of short poles in this neighborhood?
We can always order more short poles. No, we haven't completed the program, first of all, but, no, we have a-
Mayor?
Question to the residents that are here is, have you considered a cost share? What's your feeling on upgrading and paying for the additional costs?
Yes, I had actually gone around and spoken with as many residents as I could and there were four households that felt that they could complete, but there are many circumstances of other households that they literally did not feel that they could spare that little extra bit even spread out over three or four years. So, I believe I had called this gentleman last week and said that, you know, for better or worse, you know, he had to continue because that was not an option. So-
So, you think it's not an option for the residents to pay the difference for upgrading to the lower ornament poles?
It's not financially possible. I mean, I literally canvassed all of those blocks and four households just cannot share that cost of the entire project.
Mr. Hayes?
Yeah, well, what would be the disadvantage of leaving the lights like they are?
It's a series system and we've been replacing the series street lighting system because parts availability. It's just, it's a system that's very obsolete and it's hard to maintain. You know, we went through this discussion, you know, back in '95, but it's, it's next to impossible to continue to maintain, is bottom line. There's parts that are no longer available. Lamps are literally no longer made. In fact, we'll have maybe a few dozen boxes of series thousand lumen lamps extra. And there's one city that we're aware of that maybe we can sell these lamps to and that's Los Angeles. So, they're just, this is an obsolete system, plain and simple. Parallel system is the new lighting.
A series system, one goes out and all along go out, right?
Well, it depends on it, but we've had, what happens is there's grounds that occur and finding the grounds is difficult. The cable, I mean, in many cases, it's 60, 70-year-old, you know, equipment here and we're trying to piece it together for a long time, so. But yes, frequently, when we have a ground and the whole circuit is out.
And if further questions?
I just have one. There was, one of the speakers said he would like to have a decreased illumination. Is there a way if, you've got to replace the poles or that sort of thing, just to have, whether it's a lower wattage or lower lumen output?
The illumination will probably be very similar, next identical to Washington Street east of Vine. And again, I know we took a second look at what was initially laid out and we heard the comments of residents there and the engineers have reported to me that they've increased the spacing to be a little sensitive to that, but still, we have to have a certain level of illumination for pedestrians and motorists too, for their safety, but it's going to be fairly identical to what's on Washington Street.
And how different is that from what's currently in that neighborhood? I mean, it's-
It will certainly be more illumination at night. It'll be more consistent illumination. There won't be bright spots and dark spots, it'd be fairly, you know, consistently lit and I think that's evident by the new lighting we've put down on Vine and on Washington, for example. It's evident even where the short poles are. The illumination levels are much more uniform than they used to be.
Okay.
So, it will be brighter.
Further questions? Okay. Thank you. Is there any other public input? Okay. Is there any council member input? I don't suppose people would mind if we just take a minute to congratulate our newest Nobel laureates from Urbana and I think that makes Urbana probably have the highest per capita Nobel winners of any city in the entire country. So, congratulations to them. Next on the agenda is item number five, ordinance number 2003-09-103, an ordinance approving the analysis of impediments to fair housing choice for the City of Urbana fiscal year 2003, 2004. Mr. Gruy?
Good evening. You may recall that we provided a copy of this analysis of impediments to fair housing choice about a month ago at the committee meeting and wanted to provide everyone a little time to get familiar with the document. We spent a number of months of it and figured we should at least give you a month or so. We noted in the memo a few comments that councilperson Pat provided us that were helpful and a copy of that is attached. And so, really, I guess this evening, we were hoping if there's some additional comments, ideas, et cetera, that might make the document more complete, we could incorporate those and prepare a final, a final draft of this AI.
Okay. There any questions or comments or additions, changes to these analysis? Mr. Hayes?
Not necessarily any changes. I'd like to ask a question, maybe you can answer it, maybe you can't answer. But this analysis of impediments for fair housing, protection from discrimination, bases of race, color, religion, sex, handicap, disability, familial status, national origin. And what I'm getting at is, usually, people below the poverty level, they don't usually have a choice where they live.
Yeah, okay.
Basically. So, I'm just wondering how, you know, how does the city and the housing authority get caught up in situations like Lakeside Terrace and Dunbar Court and all these public housing places either being predominantly white or predominantly black? And yet, we say we're not discriminating, but it appears that there is some kind of discrimination going on because they shouldn't have a choice on where they're going to live. You know, they should be able to live in these different places because they have a need for affordable housing, but it doesn't seem like it's, it's being, the people are, in other words, it seems like people going for public housing, you know, in the African-American and Dunbar Court or Lakeside Terrace, we don't see too many Caucasians there. So, I just wonder, do you have any ideas why things like this happen?
I suspect it's somewhat a function of development patterns. Over time, it's an interesting observation. You know, I suspect if we were to map out public housing, Section 8, other affordable housing alternatives, we would find that they might be in parts of the city and maybe not as prevalent in others. That's pretty much what we're speaking about. And like I said, it's an interesting, interesting observation because in a lot of the affordable housing, oh, I don't know, you know, organizations and interest groups, there is that discussion about trying to broaden that and to create those opportunities all over a community where people can have that choice. I'd like to live on that side of town, but I can't because I can't afford anything there. And if we could bring affordable housing opportunities to other, other parts of the community, sure, that'd be, that'd be advantageous. That would be addressing an impediment to fair housing. I don't know that we might have explicitly, we have to go back and check if we had covered that to the extent that we might and note any kind of, I think our recommendations would be, would be tough to come by right now, but surely to note it as a, as an impediment, which is the availability in certain areas of the city.
Yeah, I'd like to note, note it as an impediment.
Further comments?
Yeah, I have some, some additions or changes I'd like to propose. Would it be all right if I went ahead and moved the ordinance and then moved it as an amendment?
Sure.
Okay. Moves that we send the ordinance approving the analysis of impediments to fair housing choice for the City of Urbana to city council with a recommendation for approval.
Certainly.
Motion by Ms. Pat, second by Mr. Hayes.
And I'm going to pass out a list of changes that, which I'll add, although I don't know the language, but add to it, Mr. Hayes' suggestion that list as impediments, as one of the impediments to fair housing, the segregation, or the, I don't know if you might call segregation, but the lack of racial diversity in public housing. I'll just go through these quickly. Most of the first few changes here are really just corrections. I do want to say first that this, we had quite a bit of, quite a bit of staff effort was put into drafting this document and drafts and redrafts and community development commission. It was a lot of hard work and I do appreciate all that Mr. Gruy and his staff and the people who assisted him did. Okay. The first change is on page two. This is just on the first bullet point that describes some factors that might limit housing choice. The document lists discrimination based on race, color, national origin, sex, religion, familial status, and disability, which are the protected classes under federal law. And I'm proposing that we add all of the protected classes under Urbana law, which include physical or mental disability, age, creed, class, marital status, personal appearance, sexual orientation, matriculation, political affiliation, prior arrest or conviction record or source of income. The second change is what I'm guessing was just a typo in a chart on page 24 that lists the capacity of public housing. It listed 10 units as existing at steer place in 1991 and I think that must have been a typo because the number of units didn't change between '81 and 2001. So, that would just change it from 10 to 89, which is the amount listed for those two other years. Number four, about housing need, this has to do with the Section 8 waiting list. At the time that the first draft of the analysis, the Section 8 waiting list had not been opened for a long time, so the draft says the Section 8 waiting list hasn't been open for a long time, but since then, it had, it was open in July, so this changed, just deletes the language that referred to the numbers on the old waiting list and that says, that currently says the waiting list was closed and would open and, well, it was going to open this year to say that, the plan said it would open this year and in fact, it did and the approximate number of people who applied for Section 8. And the last change that's really just a correction is on page 27. The introductory paragraph lists three agencies that, it says in the document, process complaints of housing discrimination, but one of the three is Urbana's Building Safety Division. And Building Safety Division hears housing complaints, but not the housing discrimination complaints. So, the proposed change in the language would just make that clear that several agencies report that they receive and process complaints about housing and then would list those three agencies. The last three changes I'm suggesting are, what I sent you a memo about, is there a little more on the line of policy? The first one is on page 46 where it has recommendations or strategies for addressing the lack of affordable housing and I propose leading the bullet point that says encourage the housing authority program to allow Section 8 voucher holders to use their vouchers toward a mortgage payment. The, well, mortgage payments are helpful if the housing authority were to move forward in any aggressive manner to allow Section 8 voucher holders to use vouchers for mortgage payments- mortgage payments, that would be shifting the Section Eight program from serving very low-income people who need rent assistance to serving higher-income people who do not now participate in the program because they don't need Section Eight assistance to afford, to afford rent. And that, my personal opinion is that that's really the goal of the federal government in proposing that Section Eight be used for mortgage payment, is to eliminate assistance to low-income people and people who are, I mean, truly low-income people, people who make fifteen thousand a year, and instead shift it to people who make forty-two thousand a year because the federal government considers them low-income too. The second change is just a little change in the language under, on page fifty, again on lack of affordable housing. The bullet point said investigate innovative approaches to encourage affordable housing, such as using tax credits to finance affordable housing. I think as we found in this community, tax credit housing does not generate housing that is any cheaper than the non-tax credit housing next door and across the street. I don't know if it's possible to, to use tax credits to finance affordable housing for extremely low-income households, but that would be a better goal, and that's something that we've been talking about for the Lakeside Terrace redevelopment. So this would be more consistent with what we've been talking about actually doing. And then the last recommendation is to add a bullet point that isn't anywhere in here, and that's help build the capacity of CHODO's community housing development organizations to develop affordable multifamily housing to address the housing needs of extremely low-income households. As I mentioned in the memo I sent out to folks last week, we, when the community development commission and city council met jointly to talk about housing needs, the top three recommendations included increasing affordable multifamily housing, and we, that's become, it's, it's appearing to be a very big challenge that may be beyond our means, but certainly one possible strategy to get toward that would be to try to build the capacity of CHODOs so that they might be able to help with that. So having gone through that, I move to amend the analysis to include these changes.
So motion by Ms. Pat?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hayes. Is there further discussion? Ms. Chenoweth?
Yeah, I have a series of questions, mostly looking through the, the summary. First question is, when it, when the summary identifies impediments to fair housing and then lists possible action items, are those action items, are we making a commitment to those action items, or are these just generally a good idea, and maybe someday somebody will do them? Or what's, I'm not really sure exactly, because I'm not familiar with this document, and I haven't seen it in my term on council. I'm just trying to understand the process. Once this is passed, where do these, where do these kind of action items go?
Okay. In the HUD, the requirements that set forth that we conduct this analysis, they indicated in that that, you know, you really didn't need any particular recommendations specific. The HUD was just asking that we conduct the analysis of impediments, and then we'd find out what the impediments are, then report annually in our year-end report what we may have done to address the impediments. I guess as staff, we took the document a little further and added some recommendations, maybe not so much as hard and fast, a timeline of events and things that, that we're certainly going to implement as soon as possible, but almost more so to give the impediments almost some context. We thought it would be helpful to just speak generally about things that could be done to address this impediment. Our community development commission noted that in the course of developing the annual action plan and budgeting our entitlement money, they'd like to take a second to look at the impediments to see, is there something we might want to use some of the CDBG home money for, if it's training for landlords, developers, what have you. So from a recommendation standpoint, there is, no one's expected to implement this on, in any timeline, or to use the recommendations beyond just ideas.
But on an annual basis, you do report progress on, on addressing the impediments to fair housing?
Yes, for instance, this year, we reported we, we were able to get ahold of some videotape, and we're running some public service announcements on UPTV about fair housing. And we continue to use our fair housing logo, or HUD's fair housing logo in our documents, et cetera. So those are some of the smaller things. In the future, we might look at workshops and training.
And then just, I have a series of small questions, and counsel will bear with me. I just want to walk through sequentially, if you, I'm on page eight, which is where my questions start. The, under rental market, it says consider creating a program providing assistance with security and utility deposits. Isn't it the case that we have a utility assistance program, and do we not have a, a security deposit assistance program? Or is that through the township, not through the city?
I believe there's a, Urban League's utility program is extremely popular in that vein. We weren't aware explicitly that there was a, a security deposit program available where, you know, if a landlord wants two months' rent or, or something to that effect, we thought that could be an impediment to getting the housing you wanted if, if that was the case. For a lot of folks, we thought or heard anecdotally might be able to afford rent, but didn't have that chunk of cash to put down to get in that apartment. So that was our thinking.
Ms. Pat?
The, what you might be thinking about, the regional planning commission administers a program that's funded by the state through depart, is it still called Department of Community? No, what used to be DECA, what's it called now? Department of Community, Commerce and Community Affairs is now...
Economic Opportunity, Commerce and Economic Opportunity.
Actually, the money might not go through there anymore. Maybe it's DHS, Department of Health and Human Services, but anyway, it's, um...
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Ms. Wine, though. Yes. Okay, we'll, nothing for purpose of collective bargaining.
...being held for the purpose of receiving public comment regarding the consideration of an Urbana Police Department 2003 law enforcement block grant request. These funds will be used to pay the salary for a part-time administrative assistant in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, three hundred thirteen dollars. The required match of three thousand, thirty-five dollars will be used for officer training and annual in-tray, in-service training. Is there anybody here to speak at this public hearing regarding the police department block grant? Keith, did you want to add anything? This is something we do pretty much every year. We've used it for this purpose a number of times, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. There being no comment at this public hearing, the public hearing is closed, and we'll be meeting as the Urbana City Council, as the committee of the whole, in just a few minutes.